We call meeting order. Can we have a roll call, please? Mr. Hurt.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
From South Patrigo. Mr. Washington, President. Mr. White, Senator. Mr. Neal. Mr. Barhu. Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here.
Thank you. We have four. Thank you very much. I think everybody got the minutes from the last meeting order. Any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can we move to new items, please? We have Agenda Item Number Four, which is a zoning map amendment, DEV 2013-097, Midtown Master Plan Rezoning.
Good evening. I'm Jason Jeffries with the redevelopment office. I just want to go through a little bit of background because I think what we're -- this is end of what is like a probably a two or three year process for the midtown redevelopment area in terms of adopting a new master plan for the midtown area. And it started with, basically, it's the vision plan. Let me get the PowerPoint up there.
Now, we enjoy having you up there.
Essentially, you know, it started with the vision, which was heavily developed by -- with the Midtown Redevelopment Board, along with assistance with the Florida A&amp;M students from their School of Architecture. And that's what generated essentially what was the Midtown Master Plan, which is this Through a process, it was then adopted as, basically, the plan adoption. It was adopted as part of the redevelopment plan for the midtown area, which was done in 2012. Since the adoption of that plan, we have proceeded to amend the City Comprehensive Plan, specifically the policies related to land use in the area so then we can go forward with the rezoning, which is what I have before you today. So this is kind of the final step. And everything we have done through the City Comprehensive Plan amendments and the rezoning is essentially follow what is the master plan that has been adopted by the midtown -- or recommended by the Midtown Board and later adopted by City Commission. So we have done our effort has always been the focus on adopting that master plan, and this is all part of implementing that master plan. Just some of the background on the, you know, the plan essentially sets up some concepts, which is looking at, it kind of has this neighborhood focus to it with a center of a town, has like a main town center near Bethune-Cookman on ISB, right around the intersection of International Speedway, Western International Speedway and MLK. Is the main town center with the intense development of mixed-use development there. Then it has these four or five nodes throughout the, kind of creating park districts, not unlike what you see in Savannah. I think it's kind of their inspiration. And those are neighborhood centers. And then you preserve kind of the, then the plan sets up preservation of the existing neighborhood where there are housing stock in the midtown area, and then kind of clearly defines what is the area, kind of creates that definition of what is the future expansion for Bethune-Cookman University, which has been in the past some contention, I think, or tension between the neighborhood and Bethune-Cookman as they've expanded Bethune-Cookman. And this plan clearly sets out that defined area with the school land use. With that, you know, some of these main focuses, so these are some of the, we'll say is the vision of the Midtown Master Plan. Again, the town center with that mixed-use development in the center. So all these land -- now what you're seeing transcribing into land development with setbacks, everything's supposed to follow this vision. Is really to see a redevelopment into the area. And the other thing, I put up this map here. This comes directly out of the master plan. A lot of what created the boundaries of where the land uses are, which was part of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and now the zoning, which clearly it matches right up with the Comprehensive Plan land use map, is the districts essentially that they identified in the master plan. And that's what I'm talking about, the clear boundaries for the institutional uses, what's the boundary for the town center, for the neighborhood areas. Those boundaries, what parcels were selected, all come from what was adopted as part of the master plan. Some of the key elements that are carrying through from the plan into the Comprehensive Plan and now into the zoning, again, here's the town center use, which is centered around MLK. You see some pictures identifying the types of development that they would envision would be in that area. The one difference you will notice between what is being adopted now and what is in the master plan is we've, because of some comments that were made by the Department of Transportation as we went through the process of adopting, this stuff does have after city, after this board makes a recommendation to City Commission, City Commission then forwards it on to state review. We got comments back from the Department of Transportation was concerned about the intensity of development and its impact on transportation on ISB. In looking through some of the concepts that were identified, what's in the plan, we focused that mixed-use intense, medium intense use district for midtown, just on MLK and MLK and Western International, which is just to the east of the campus. You see on this map, it shows it also extending further down. Because of those comments, we changed that to a transitional use and felt that's still consistent with the concepts that were put in place with the Midtown Master Plan. This is the next level of districts, again, those neighborhood mixed-use districts. So, you know, the zoning follows exactly the land uses, where those nodes for the neighborhood centers, the little park districts are located. And then along, then there's more of what they call Activity Center Mixed Use. Those are the more intense commercial uses that continue to be on Nova Road around the old Daytona Mall and what is now, you know, the Burlington Shopping Center, the redevelopment of those sites there. And then the neighborhood preservation, I'm sorry, this is neighborhood transition and the rest of the kind of the commercial corridors, like along George Ingram, Orange Avenue, other portions of MLK Boulevard. That's where you have what's called a transitional commercial use, which is kind of that buffer between where commercial uses and since they're smaller lots, the nearby residential uses. Creates that transitional use. And then you have the neighborhood preservation districts, which are the rest of the, kind of the center areas of midtown where you have residential uses. Oh, I'm sorry, and then other, and then along the railroad is what they call kind of an industrial, you know, the eco-industrial areas where they felt could be redeveloped into green type industrial uses. And that's where we picked up the RDD-7, which is also some, a zoning district proposed in the downtown, since that district's on both sides of the railroad, with the downtown redevelopment area and the midtown. So that's essentially kind of the concept, you know, of the master plan. It's followed through to the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan map amendments, and now where we are today with the zoning map amendments. So this is all consistent with the Midtown Master Plan. The Midtown Redevelopment Board has recommended approval and staff continues to support the Midtown's recommendation. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions with staff?
I was going to just raise a couple of questions on the specific tables that we have included. And I know I talked to Jason before the meeting, and I am not going to support this. I think we've gone through a long laborious process here. But, for example, on 4-110 where you have the midtown, redevelopment midtown mixed-use, you have a lot with, I understand it's a minimum, but it's 24 feet, and then you have a 15-foot street side yard or a 5-foot interior side. I was just concerned about some of what we have set up when you begin to apply the numbers from the actual tables, if they're going to deter or discourage reinvestment and redevelopment. So we began to work the numbers. I was thinking about a couple of the developments that have come to us of late, asking for us to revise our lot coverage and some other things. Some of these are pretty strict, and Jason has assured me, first of all, that there are other parts of the code that allow us to deal with it. But I was also concerned that somebody comes in off the surface, they don't have that knowledge and information, but they think, well, I might invest here. He said they will be doing some cleanup on it. So I just wanted to point out that there were some areas, when you began to look at the lot coverage or the setbacks of the lot sizes, it makes it very hard. This particular area has a lot of really small lots, and we want to encourage that reinvestment and things like that. Just wanted to make those points. Need to make sure we come back and clean it up.
Yeah. I think our intent is in a couple of months after the adoption, as we start applying the new code. Well, a couple of things. One is, what you have in your packet for the brevity of the, see, I got a lengthy packet, did the same thing with the Midtown Board. We really just clipped out the direct sections that apply to these, these are the zoning districts, actually already in the proposed, so-called the Clarion Code, the placeholders we had for midtown. So we just provided the development standards and the use charts that apply to those districts. But there are modified, there's other, more details, you get a modified use standards that are going to apply. And then also there's other sections of the code that still apply, like, I think there was a lot of work done on, yeah, well, there's a lot of work done on, I think, contextual placement in residential districts that would still apply to midtown. That's in another section of the code. That's just going to apply, I think, my understanding, citywide. So there are those sections that apply. But any other, if we find any, as we start to apply this code and we start finding things are just not working, because remember, this is a, you know, it's definitely a very aggressive vision that was presented for midtown by some very ambitious students, architectural students. But there's kind of the reality, as we get in and we start applying this, as land development comes in, we might have to start making some tweaks to this, and we'll work with the Midtown Board on that.
No, I know our board has wanted to not have some of these. And the other question, Scott. Thank you very much. Actually, I guess I don't have to ask if there's anybody for or against, because there's nobody here. So I, the orders are in discussion?
I'd just like to say I'm glad this, this master plan for midtown has moved to this stage. It has been a long tedious process, and I have worked with it from the vision standpoint. And to see it move to this point, I am just overjoyed.
Good. Finally.
Yes.
Anybody else, any comments? Take a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Midtown Master Plan Rezoning, DEV 2013-097.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. Motion will be approved. Agenda Item Number Five, zoning map amendment for DEV 2014-144, Hoyle Drug Company Building at 516 Main Street. Okay, we approve.
Good evening. Reed Burger, redevelopment director. And this is a very small parcel, as you can see, on Main Street. And this is the first effort that's been brought this far in the process before you see have an opportunity to at least give an overlay classification to a building where a property owner has requested that this occur, to take advantage of the ordinance that we put in place so that we can preserve some of the significant buildings that are out there. And so I think you have the report from Mr. Weaver. You've got all the information that has, obviously, Historic Board and the Main Street Board were both unanimous. They're not always that agreeable with each other in the past, but in this case, everyone agreed this unanimously, that this was, this was something that in terms of rezoning it for that historic classification, made good sense for this particular building. And I don't think I'll bore you with all the slides here, but I want to point out one. This is the E-zone master plan. And up in the corner where you see some red buildings, those were surveyed and as some of the significant buildings, let me see if I can put a pointer on that thing. I don't know where that is on this particular one. But anyway, that is, yeah, there we go, right here, right at the corner building, that is 516 Main. And that was considered a significant building on Main Street, and because of its architectural character in particular, being unique, they have recommended this be preserved if at all possible. So it's in more places in terms of planning. So I think that that should support what we're trying to do here. And it's available, you got space available still downstairs, I think. The applicant is here who is living upstairs in the building and would like to see it come forth. And then just some examples of some of the larger size buildings of that style. This is a little more modest. And I think Mr. Weaver did a pretty good job describing why it meets all of the tests for the zoning overlay. So our recommendation of staff is approval, along with the two boards that have already reviewed this.
Okay. Any questions with staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. John Matts, I'm the owner of 516 Main Street. When I purchased this property in December of 2013, it was extremely deteriorated, and we did a full rehab of the entire building. So with a very good general contractor and a sizable amount of money, I might add that we were able to save the building. It was definitely deteriorating towards the negative side. So I am interested in basically, now that I saved the building, I'm interested now in protecting the building. When I purchased the property, I wasn't aware, actually, that it was originally on the National Registry. And during the planning process with the general contractor, we continued to try to go through the hurdles of the fact that it was on the National Registry. So in fact, we had to jump through the hurdles, but I wasn't able to take advantage of any of the federal or any of the local grants because it only has National Registry, does not have the local registry of value. My intent is to live in the property, I'm currently living in the property right now, and to maintain the property until retirement. As the property, obviously, we've rehabbed the entire building, but 10 or 15 years from now, it's going to be, there's going to be monies that are, certainly would be needed, you know, to do some of the mansard roofing and some of the cornice, cornering around the building can be, you know, a sizable amount. So I'm really looking to protect the building, but at the same time, being able to take advantage of maybe any future monies that may be available through local or federal grants.
Okay. Any questions with the applicant?
Just to thank you.
Well, it's, I fell in love with the oldest woman I've ever fallen in love with. She was 100 years old when I actually bought her on her 100-year-old anniversary, so I'm looking forward to hopefully get a decision today and continue moving forward in the process.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. In the audience, speaking either way, the orders are in discussion? I'll take a motion.
I move approval of the zoning map amendment, DEV 2014-144, for the Hoyle Drug Company Building at 516 Main Street.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, we will recommend it for approval.
I'm sure Mr. Nicholson will be proud.
I'm just thrilled to see this first building on Main Street move forward. Okay. Agenda Item Number Six is a zoning map amendment, DEV 2014-142, Garland Residence at 216 First Avenue.
Good evening. Now we got, yeah, we have another, this is a historic designation now in the downtown redevelopment area.
State your name, Scott.
Oh, we got, Jason Jeffries. I thought. This is, the Garland Residence is at 216 First Avenue. This is what we call the historic Garland Residence. The request is to add this to the Register of Historic Places. It is a local residence with historic significance. And Paul Weaver with Historic Property Associates also did a report on this site for the applicants. This is, as I mentioned, in the downtown redevelopment area near the Basilica, just on the north end of downtown. It's in a, the Level Two residential, so, you know, it's in a generally a residential area of the downtown area, and it's currently in the RP. And there's, it's a Queen Anne-style structure, and the applicants have purchased it recently, and they're looking to restore the building. Its history is that it's associated with some local historic, very interesting history, I think, that we weren't aware of until they came forward with the report. Associated with two Daytona Beach families. One is the Garlands, from one of the early pioneers of the town of Daytona. He was an orange grower, this was his orange grove up in this area around the house, and stagecoach owner, before the railroad, came to Daytona. And then later, the U-Banks, of course, was a family that had a store on Beach Street. So there's, you know, the connection to downtown. House is built between 1898 and 1904 in the Queen Anne architecture style. The building does meet three of the criteria for listing to be added to the local register. It's associated with local history, associated with two historic families, and it's an excellent example of the Queen Anne style, really. I believe in downtown, we have maybe only one or, you know, the, the house on Ridge would be another good example of the Queen Anne style. So we have very few of those in the town of Daytona. Has distinctive architectural features, and it's architectural, as you look at the structure, it's, the integrity of it generally remains. So staff, along with the Historic Preservation Board and the Downtown Redevelopment Boards, once again, two boards, both agree to recommend the placing this on the local register of Historic Places and rezoning it to the RP-H overlay zoning. And the applicants are here answering your questions.
Thank you very much. Is there some problem why both those boards are approving? Thank you very much. Right here from the applicant, please. Actually, would you, before you leave, could you fill out one of these screen forms?
Oh.
You don't have to do it now.
Okay.
Would you state your name and address?
I'm Jennifer Fino, and what was the last part you asked? For name and?
And address.
Oh, 216 First Avenue.
What would you like to tell us?
Well, I guess outside of any historic designation, my family and me were truly blessed just to even live in this house. It is a beautiful house. The things that we've learned about it over the course of, during the research, not only was the person who built the house a pioneer of Daytona, but he also was a pioneer in California and brought the first Olympics to America. So, and it's just an absolutely beautiful house. When we got it, it had no walls, no electricity, no plumbing, no windows, and we're pretty much trying to bring it back from the ground up, and we're just really happy with what we have.
Good. Good. Any questions with the applicant? Thank you very much.
You know, I've been driving by this house for a couple of years, so worried, I'm so glad, so worried.
Me too. Okay. Hold on. Is there any discussion? I'll take a motion.
Move approval of Item Six, zoning map amendment, DEV 2014-142, Garland Residence at 216 First Avenue.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, thank you very much. Yes, of course, our recommendation, of course, will be approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Land Development Code text amendment, DEV 2014-156, permitting EMCs and CSPs for media facilities. I'm not, EMCs, I know what they are. Yes.
EMCs are electronic message centers, and CSPs are comprehensive sign plans, which we've got a few of those in our city. First off, let me point out that Dennis Morozak couldn't be here this evening. He has had some family issues, and we wish him the best. And typically, when you're seeing this text amendment, you're seeing a comprehensive sign plan. And the applicant has submitted an application for that, but it wasn't ready. So we've moved forward with the text amendment. It's similar to the other ones we've seen recently where they're asking to allow for the two sections to be amended. One that talks about the permitted areas, EMCs would be allowed, and the other is the design and construction standards, and relatively minor surgery to the code is needed, similar to the ones that are identified in the staff report we've done recently. And we will be bringing in the near future the comprehensive sign plan that gets into a little bit more detail. But this specific request is, the criteria, while it talks about the newsprint, it's going to be providing at the entrance, actually, it's a new entrance that we've identified for the News Journal Center between Fifth and Sixth off of Nova. They own that frontage there, and we, actually, part of that frontage is in Holly Hill, and part of it is within Daytona Beach. And we've been working cooperatively with them. Actually, I think they had to do some comp plan amendments and rezonings for their portions to make it all industrially consistent with ours. And ultimately, this request would allow them to have comprehensive sign plan for their campus, I guess. Jim, elaborate on some more detail, then I see he's got a handout. He's passing help. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to address.
Any questions with staff?
I have a question. How many other properties would be media facilities for daily circulations exceeding 50,000?
I'm not aware of any others within the city that we've owned.
Are we in a position now where we need to be looking at roadway corridors rather than specific parcels? You know, I'm thinking to myself, we've had the A1A, we've had ISB, now we have Nova Road, or a road such as Nova Road. And I, you know, and I'm thinking, we keep coming up with these specific carve-outs rather than looking at corridors where we would accept the EMCs and those where we would not find them acceptable. And the carve-outs kind of concern me, the way we keep piecemealing this. It's just a concern.
Well, let me point out one thing relative, I don't disagree with you, and I know the City Commission doesn't, City Commission asked at their workshop that they had after first reading on the new land development code, is to have a discussion on the signage ordinance. Once the land development code is adopted, actually, there were several areas of the sign code or the land development code we asked Clarion not to get in. They were controversial. Every time we got into them, they bogged things down. We wanted to get that adopted. Signage was one of them, so pretty much what's in the code today is being carried over. But at least two commissioners have said they want to see this be the first issue of tax once the land development code is done.
Are there any questions with staff? Want to go to the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They're just extras. I'm Jim Morris. I'm here on behalf of the News Journal. And I've given you a handout, and the handout has a letter A up at the top. That's actually the entry to the development property from Nova Road. And so the News Journal Building is actually at the bottom of the page. It's not depicted, it's just kind of shaded in there. So what's happened is the News Journal Company has bought property that goes from its building on Sixth Street out to Nova Road. So prior to this purchase, and even today, if you're
purchase, and even today, if you're going to drive to the News Journal Building, you either come through Holly Hill and down 6th Street, or you go up Nova Road, and there's some Holly Hill jurisdiction along Nova Road, and then you're still in Daytona when you turn on 6th to drive up to the News Journal. And News Journal's been kind of tucked away. So what they've done, they've developed or bought this property that's depicted here. So my letter A is actually the Nova Road frontage, and you can see the development plan is going to be for a commercial complex that goes from the News Journal Building out to Nova Road. And the News Journal has saved an entry road that goes all the way back to its building. So in the future, you will have a choice of being able to turn onto the commercial property, and letter A is where the EMC sign is proposed to be. And you would turn there and drive off Nova Road without going on to 6th Street into the News Journal Building. And there's a significant component of traffic control as it relates to this. But what I'd like you to do, if you don't mind, just turn to the next page in the handout, and the buildings that you see pictured in the handout are actually in Holly Hill. And what I've done is shown you the little complex where the coffee cup and other things are at. And they have an EMC at their, on their buildings at Holly Hill permits them to have. That's why you see a different image of something about getting a haircut or something like that. And also then another picture about getting your stash done, mustache, I think, is what they mean. But it's, my point is that you, you see it's colored, and I've, we've asked for color in our proposal. And this is upstream from the traffic, so that as you come down, you know, you go to the next page, what I've shown you at the bottom of the page, you see the red arrow on the bottom picture. That's effectively looking from the property where the existing message center sign is, at the News Journal location. So you've got traffic coming along towards 6th Street. Now, they've got a couple of videos, if you would please, thank you. So I'm going to give you, just these are short, probably 30 seconds or so. And the first one I just took, driving down Nova Road and going into the main entry. And so we're just coming down Nova Road, we're coming up to the location where you turn in. Here it is. That little median area right there is, I had to keep moving, so.
Part of the.
And we're driving down the entry road.
For the new campus.
For the new campus. And then you've got the entry that you used today, the canopy area at the News Journal Building, and that's where you come in. So now we've got direct connection from Nova Road into the News Journal Building. Now, the next little video, please, is just coming back on Nova Road and going to 6th Street. And one thing I want you to notice is there is a significant sign, that's the News Journal's current sign. That sign will be removed. And so what is going to happen then is, from a perspective of most people going to the News Journal Building, they will, I expect, use the Nova Road entry, and you'll take traffic away from 6th Street. And something that you, I'm sure you didn't notice it, and I didn't notice it immediately, but I took my first video that I showed you, went up, turned around, came back out, and came back down Nova and turned into 6th. The same truck is at the traffic light in both my videos. That's because you get held up that long at 6th Street trying to get onto Nova Road. So my point is, you're going to have a turning movement for people coming to the News Journal, and we're talking about a very simple EMC that's a low-scale thing, and you'll see it in the sign plan that we bring to you this coming meeting, that will mark the location, and its purpose is really just for the News Journal to mention things that are featured in its paper, and things of interest. So we've talked with the staff, and the reason the, the rest of the plan is held up is to try and deal with the question of off-site advertising. For instance, if we say bank robbery in Daytona, and that's something that's featured on the EMC, that's consistent with the News Journal's product of news. On the other hand, if we say Bob Hoytman's gas station on Nova, 29 cents a gallon for gas, it's off-site advertising. So, and the staff wants to make sure that we define that. There's no intention to do anything except talk about newsworthy events that the newspaper features. And some of those things, too, are going to be community events. If you think about the history of, for instance, London Symphony when they were here, and those kind of things, just announcing that sort of stuff. But it also demarks the location to enter their commercial property. It has a message center sign in another jurisdiction immediately south of it, and this is where Nova's wide, where the canal's in the center. And while I understand your question, Ms. Drago, about the, looking at the quarters and so on, I think the other thing you've got to consider is that this is the only methodology available to us right now. And I think your sign code, and just before I came here, I was in Port Orange on one very similar to this, sign codes have been left behind in terms of what you can do with signage. And I've worked in this area and in Daytona for a long time as it relates to lighted signs, changeable copies, and so on. And we, we're coming from a period that I remember 25 years or so ago where chasing lights were an issue. And y'all seen chasing lights. It's a sort of arcade thing. We've got yellow, white bulbs, and they look like something's running down the string of lights. The gift shops all used to have them, and the city outlawed those. We're not talking chasing lights. We're talking about images that have a lot of control as it relates to the intensity of the light, dimming when it gets to be dark. And it really relates to a pictorial image that, if you could somehow change plastic panels fast enough, you've got the same thing. And so when we talk about the timing of it and so on, it isn't something that's going to be flashing from an intensity perspective. It's not going to be doing anything that's harmful in that respect, and it allows for a community bulletin board. And while you consider the technology today, the other thing that used to be outlawed in many ways was changeable copy signs. But a changeable copy sign, when the codes were written, was you had the little plastic boards that were white that turned yellow over time, and you put the little plastic letters up there, the little thing looks like a giant shuffleboard tool, and they fall out, and it just, you know, it all really does look pretty bad. This is very high-tech equipment in terms of how the signage is accomplished. And then from a community perspective, when you look at the other signs that have been permitted to qualify, churches have, that's true, but also the道 track has got one and other things. You've got the News Journal, which is as close to a private central community facility as anything we have. It is our primary newspaper. There are other newspapers. But it is, the News Journal is the one that the community as a large reads and understands the events that are occurring here, and to a certain extent, outside the area. So as they work this property through, all of the rest of signage within their project, and that's what's depicted in these other things, the different letters show buildings, are going to be consistent with the adopted sign ordinance. And another thing that we got caught in, I had referred to existing zoning categories. The new land develop, in my sign plan, the new land development code doesn't use the same nomenclature, and so staff said, look, we need to make sure that we match up with the new code, even though it's not in effect probably until, is it March? You expect it, Rich? Probably it will be in effect in March. So we're just trying to make sure that those things match up, which is why there is the dot in it. So you will see the second part of this proposal in January. That's what the staff and I agreed to do, and that's why, Mr. Chairman, when you asked me earlier if I wanted to go, I said I would stay. There is a second part, and that's going to come to you. And then when those two parts are done, the city commission will have the chance to consider everything together. But what's in the second part is actually just an illustration of the sign. And it's a monument style sign. It has an image board, and gives you a message of what's there. And I know it's a changing circumstance. Understand that. But Daytona Beach, in my estimation, needs many, many changes to let it keep up. And if you go north and south of here, Ormond Beach, Port Orange, Holly Hill, everywhere, these type of signs exist in a greatly larger number. And I'm not suggesting that that's what should happen in Daytona, but in the instance right now, the only tool that we have to move forward is to do it this way. And the News Journal is getting ready to finish this subdivision up and build commercial properties there. The property where the sign is will actually connect directly to the News Journal Building. It will be a part of that and not separated from it. So the entry to the News Journal Building, the main entry, will be on Nova Road and will take traffic off of 6th Street. So there is a side benefit of the addition of traffic. And there's something that I actually just learned in regard to the sign that I worked on in Port Orange a little earlier this evening. Technology is available now where your silver alerts, your amber alert, sorts of messages can be put onto these message center signs. They actually have the ability to do that and distribute it so cooperatively with the sign owners, and certainly the News Journal would be. You've got the ability to use those signs to communicate emergency messages in the event that needs to be done. So I think there's a couple of community benefits here. Certainly the traffic control and the 6th Street issue, which is a little different than the other ones you've dealt with, yet this property fronts on a state road. And in regard to the media facility, there isn't anything else that matches that, but I think that's been the tradition of what y'all have done with sign amendments. You do have WESH on US-1. WESH does have a tower that I'm not quite sure how tall it is, but I think it's over 70 feet. So anyhow, that's really what this is about.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
Well, I was just going to comment that I was concerned at first when I saw the daily circulation or viewers of 50,000 or more. And I began thinking, well, does this mean radio stations are going to be next in line? But I see you covered it by how it's located, how it's stated.
Yes, sir.
That it has to be a state-maintained major road.
Yes, sir.
So that starts control. I guess the only other one would be Channel 2. They would be on the same road, so that would.
Yeah. And the other thing you've got to keep in mind is the EMC panels that are permitted are relatively small in size. I.
If I understand, it's going to be a monument sign, it's going to follow the code?
Yes, sir.
We have.
Yeah. I mean, height, it may be a little taller, but it is a monument style. It fits in with the scale, and I'll have a drawing for you that shows a human image in front of it, so you get an idea of the scale. One thing that you've got to deal with when you're on a sign at an intersection like this, where you've got major traffic and you've got turning movements, you've got to make sure to protect your line of sight so you locate it in such a way that people can pull to the edge to make their right turn to be, go northbound, and if they can see the traffic that's coming.
I have no problem.
Okay. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Again, I don't need to ask the crowd out there. Is anything that needs to be discussed?
Rose didn't hear that, he's on good.
Is there any discussion? If not, a motion, please?
Motion to approve land development code text amendment, DEV 2014-156.
Second.
Any second, did I hear?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed?
Thank you. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you for your patience. Okay, we.
Yes, my report is very brief. We've already discussed the main issue that was on our agenda, which was the Garland Residence, and that was unanimously approved. We were given an update on the projects that we have in process, and believe it or not, it was a brief meeting.
That's it?
Yep. Merry Christmas.
How about Midtown?
Midtown did not have a December meeting, so mine's is even shorter. I rushed all the way over here to tell you that.
We're glad you're here.
I was at another meeting, so I do apologize. I had called Mr. Walton and told him that. Thank you.
We don't have a representative yet. Gosh, even briefer.
I should public comments today. Did anybody not call Mr. Nicholson?
Better do a wheel check.
Some vacation.
How about that?
For those of you that may not be aware, the NAI has a football game tomorrow night at Municipal Stadium. We're going to have millions of people around the country watching that, and invite you all to make it out there if you can. The city has had events going on all week, and I think the participants have enjoyed themselves, and they're going to be back the next two years as well. So we're looking to even build on this for next year, and like to have a good crowd there and the audience tomorrow if you can make it. And another thing, I just want to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and see you next year.
How about the board? Any comments from the board?
I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and be safe.
I was just going to say, this will be my last meeting as a planning board member, and I had a couple of comments that I wanted to make, maybe in passing on. I started thinking about it. I've been on the board 11 years. And I should preface this, when I was last appointed, I told our Zone 4 Commissioner, Rob Gilalan, that that would be the last time I would serve on the planning board, so he would have time to choose someone else. During the interim, of course, this has come up, so it gives me an option to get out a year early, you might say. But I started thinking, when I first started 11 years ago, of our planning directors, and Rick Prialetti was in charge at the time, and he nurtured some of the ones that've been on the board for a while through the oceanfront standards that we all did at that time. But then I started thinking, we have had five different directors in that 11-year period of time. Rick had been here a long time and retired, you know. So I don't want you to worry, because you've been here for a while and seem to be doing just fine. We've also been blessed with having, really, I think, outstanding senior planners on our board during this time. So it's, it's been very good. Our past boards, I think, have been excellent. I've worked with some wonderful people on the boards, and we certainly have a wonderful board going now. I guess a concern that I have, it's not so much of a concern, and I, hopefully, this new land development code, once it gets in, will make a difference. But it seems like everything that comes up to us anymore, it's got to be a special exception. It's a PUD or PCD. Nothing comes through. Now, hopefully, if we've done the job properly with the land development code that's coming in, you shouldn't be seeing hardly any of those, quite truthfully. And if you do, then you need to take another hard look, because maybe we have some other problems. So I would just caution you to watch those things. I think over the, over a period of time, it's been nice that we've had people come to us and say, we, we appreciate the fact that we are heard at the planning board. And I think we do do an excellent job, and everyone having a chance of being heard. So I just want to wish you all the very best, and of course, a Merry Christmas. But I'll be watching y'all, won't you?
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Thank you for your service, Larry.
Thank the board. Is there any other comments?
Well, I'd like to say Larry has been on this for a long time, and you've done an excellent job. Because you've been chairman sometimes, and we've come through some difficult times. And actually, it's been a pleasure having you here, and you've added a great deal to our board, so we appreciate your time. And let's thank, and let's thank staff again for what you've done for us, to show you do a nice job. And thank the board, because this is your time. This is time you take out of your week, or whatever it is, and it's time that you have to spend at home studying. And I feel like, I feel like that's a great, I feel like that's a great contribution to this community. And I, actually, I'm very proud of all of us. So thank you very much, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas. It was fun having historic things, but I mean, you know, the.